Good morning. Welcome to all this meeting. Orders at eleven to can't any board of commissioners for Thursday, September eighteenth, and we will begin our meeting with a moment of silence. If you would join me in that moment of silence and keep it in your thoughts. The our neighbors in York County who suffered a tragic loss. And if you would be on this meeting, keep that those families, those those law enforcement rather than that that lost three of their officers yesterday. They're going to have a very difficult time. So keep them in your thoughts and prayers beyond this meeting. But we'll start with a moment of silence right now. Thank you. Okay, more public comment. Adam Public. Any other takers? We'll move on to approve the minutes. Our meeting on September fourth. And note that we had an executive session meeting on September third and September tenth.
I moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments?
You're going to add to the minute, the one from yesterday?
I'm sorry.
You were in the executive session yesterday.
Oh, thank you very much. Good point. Yes, we'll amend that motion to include that.
That'll be on the next segment.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
There was no need for that. Thank you. But anyway. And any other questions, comments? And all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign and have that approval. Thank you very much.
We had receipts nine sixteen seventeen of one million, two hundred seventy seven thousand ninety seven dollars and ninety five cents. Rochester total cash at two million, seven hundred fourteen thousand, five hundred sixty four dollars and fifty two cents. We had expenditures of one million, three hundred eighty five thousand, seven hundred twenty four dollars. And our tax claim is thirty eight thousand, one hundred twenty two dollars and forty one cents. So that leaves us one million, two hundred ninety thousand, seven hundred eighteen dollars and eleven cents.
What was the first?
What's that?
What was the first part?
You know, the balance?
Yes.
One million, two hundred ninety dollars.
Got it.
Seven hundred eighteen eleven.
Thank you.
Those two approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments?
I just have a comment for the hotel tax further down the agenda. But we have fourteen thousand, seven hundred, and we have three requests just to keep in mind when we get to that, that.
Some decisions to make.
Yes.
Okay.
I also had the October decade.
Hold on, we didn't take hold on that only. So any other questions or comments? If not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Okay.
Now.
Sorry.
Before you go to that, can I just talk a moment about our Yes. our set asides and the state budget and so on? Do you mind?
Yeah.
Okay. So I know this question keeps coming up and week after week, there's no state budget. We are not receiving children use services reimbursements. That is the biggest one that's that's hurting us at the moment. We have not gone into reserves, as I call them. You know, I mean, the the real rainy day, you know, we've only over the last several years, we've only used that at the beginning part of the year when we just kind of borrow from ourselves rather than going out on a commercial lag and just right for the lag to taxes. And we've not gone into that. However, Sally is reaching into what we already have set aside for the beginning of twenty six. Some of the insurance we set aside for health insurance premiums, we set aside for for payrolls. You have used a couple of those in the to the tune of two and a half million.
Wow.
To to cover. So again, we're feeling it, you know, it's.
We're not getting the interest on it.
No.
Jamie, we did get a couple little payments from the state for children and youth, but it wasn't a lot.
No.
You know, it's a couple thousand here and there.
It's not the quarterly.
No, it's not like the act one forty eight money that we usually get.
It's probably a category that doesn't not impact.
Could be.
But anyway, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. And I, you know, that's that's where we'll likely be drawing from. Once if we get to a point where we're pulling out of that, I guess it's close to eight million dollars in 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 reserve.
In the top there, the top part.
Seven, seven, seven million, eight sixty six, close to eight million. Then 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 it's getting scary. So, you know, and I that may be. I don't know if that would be by December. I mean, it depends on how hard we hit these hit these set aside.
You really think.
Then we will be paying interest on money rather than just losing interest.
Well, if we go to the reserve, we're still.
If we go through the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Yeah, then we're, yeah. And I and I think there are counties and most likely school districts that are already in there. There's some Western PA counties I know that don't have a lot of cushion or any. So just wanted to give that updates. And so you can you can see it in the column on the on the set aside. So if you see when it's when it was set aside, but then she notes when it was used. So when you have something that was set aside for the February twenty twenty six insurance and we used it. You know, research of that we know, you know, we're earning up our own money.
Do you think it'll really go to December?
I have no idea.
Oh, I hope not. I hope they have more common sense than I. They need to talk to each other.
And I think on just a sorry, can you take this out here? But Berks County, this was a question that came up back in, I think, early August. I had answered a Lancaster orders question about whether we continue to pay social services providers. And and in Lebanon County, historically, we have. The state budget hasn't affected how you treat the providers because, you know, they're already their increases have been either flat or or none or 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 less over the years. So we continue to pay them. Perks County does not. In fact, I saw Commissioner Rivera on Friday and kind of confirmed that with him. If there's no state budget, then there's no payment to their providers. On Tuesday, Lancaster County was going to announce, I spoke to their to my counterpart there. They were going to announce that they were reducing their provider payments to sixty percent of of the invoice. That's everything on that. Thank you.
And sure.
Sally, you had something additional?
Yeah, we have our debt payments from October fifteenth. So we will be I need approval for fourteen thousand, two hundred dollars from the general fund to the general obligation bond series A of two thousand sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions or comments about this payments? None? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. That approval.
And I also have one hundred forty five thousand, three hundred twenty five dollars for the bond series of for two thousand seventeen.
Awesome.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions or comments? None? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Hold the same sign. Have that approval.
One more we have, and that's for our bond issue for two thousand twenty one. And that amount is one million, seven hundred sixty eight thousand, four hundred forty nine dollars and ninety seven cents.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
And just that money is set aside, so we're good. And then also, I will of course have to change, take my name off all of the bank's signature cards. So I just need approval to do all that.
Make a motion to remove Sally's name from, do you want to designate who it's going to yet?
Well, it would be all of our accounts. It would be first citizens, first national. Hold on. Like it.
I was really asking your staff person.
I won't be adding anyone. I'm just taking my name off because the other names are already on the signers.
Okay, all right.
Just permission to.
So you're you're amending what's on file. I make a motion.
In other words, Tina is already on.
Yeah.
And it's not replaced the signature.
It's it's, yeah, it's an amendment to what's on file. Change.
You will second the motion. Motion is second. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Have that approval.
Hey, thank you.
Well, before you get up, if by my calculation, this would be your last presentation to the panel of commissioners. And I want to thank you for your service to the county and wish you all the best, Sally.
Thank you.
Next chapter.
Happy trails.
Good morning. You introduce yourself and who is yours?
Chas Nadeley, Director of Human Resources, under personnel transactions, resignations and termination. Kellyanne Heisey, part-time senior sentiment manager one at area agency on aging resignation effective October tenth. Seth Groland, part-time meal transporter area agency on aging resignation effective September eighteenth. Cassidy Vasquez Castro, casual part-time coroner logistics technician, coroner's office resignation effective April sixteenth of the last working day being March nineteenth. Trishell Irwin, full-time correctional officer for jail termination per job abandonment effective September third, last working day, August twenty eighth. Jaylene Rincon, full-time telecommunicator, Department of Emergency Services, removal, no call, no show, effective September eighth. Jennifer Hartman, general clerk, C in the town attorney's office resignation effective September ninth. And Angel Medina, full-time deputy sheriff in the sheriff's office termination effective September second, last working day, August fourteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations with special note to Jennifer Hartman and Angela Medina, who were here fifteen and sixteen years.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions, comments?
I have a question. Is the date correct on the coroner's office?
You only found out about it now.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Are you done? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. That approval.
Under leaves of absence, John Kern, the third from Lebanon County Correctional Facility, seven to ten day leave of absence effective September tenth.
I'm going to approve the.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions, comments? None? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Under changes of status transfers and promotions, we have Janice Rodriguez, promotion from caseworker one in children and youth, the caseworker two at the rate of one thousand, six hundred and ninety eight dollars and sixty two cents by weekly effective September twenty eighth. Nicholas Therese, change of status from casual part-time correctional officer at the jail to full-time correctional officer at the rate of twenty two dollars and seventy one cents per hour effective October twelve. Jacob Martino, change of status from casual part-time correctional officer at the jail to full-time correctional officer at the rate of twenty two dollars and seventy one cents per hour effective October twelve. Courtney Finkley, promotion from office support two in domestic relations to administrative assistant two in domestic relations to the rate of one thousand, three hundred and thirty three dollars and sixty seven cents by weekly effective September twenty ninth. Tina Tobias, temporary appointment from first deputy in the treasurer's office to acting treasurer in the treasurer's office to the rate of two thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy two cents by weekly effective September twenty eighth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions, comments? None? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Hold the same sign. Have that approval.
Under other transactions, children and youth would like to hire Avery Heidler as a caseworker one at the rate of one thousand, five hundred and ninety seven dollars and sixty seven by weekly effective September twenty ninth. Lebanon County Correctional Facility would like to hire Brayden Carvaco as a casual part-time correctional officer at the rate of rate of twenty three dollars and thirty nine cents per hour effective September twenty second. And the Lebanon County Correctional Facility would like to hire the following eight full-time correctional officers, all at the rate of twenty two dollars and seventy one cents per hour, all effective September twenty second. And that is Donald Dupree, Brock Brielle, Michael Freymeyer, Ethan Althaus, Matthew Bootein, Boatedin, Ronan Schaefer, Maria Miranda, Joshua Pennington. President Judge Tullow would like to hire Alicia Boyer as a DJ office support one at the rate of one thousand, one dollar and ninety eight cents by weekly effective September twenty second. And NHIDEI would like to hire Benjamin Spitler as an ID program specialist one at the rate of one thousand, seven hundred and eighty one dollars and seven cents by weekly effective September twenty second.
Second.
The second. Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Transactions are approved.
Moving on, a salary board motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Daniel Manera's career retention payment, assistant district attorney in the district attorney's office, a one-time retention payment of four thousand, five hundred dollars effective October third. Kyle Clements, salary increase, full-time deputy sheriff in the sheriff's office, graduation of the sheriff academy to the rate of twenty dollars and sixty two cents per hour effective August thirty first. Constance Dowhauer, longevity payment, juvenile probation officer, assistant supervisor of probation services, one-time thirty-year longevity payment of three thousand, seven hundred and sixty six dollars and sixty two cents effective October third. And Sydney Power, longevity payment, probation officer one of probation services, a one-time six-year longevity payment of one thousand, seven hundred and thirty three dollars and twenty three cents effective October seventeen.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. That's salary board. Anything else, Michelle? Thank you. Good morning, Karen.
Good morning.
You would please introduce yourself or whoever's going to make a presentation on record, and then you may proceed.
Sure. My name is Erin Meyer. I'm the administrator for children and youth. With me today, I have Kelly Demme. She is the fiscal operations officer for children and youth. Audrey Fortna, director of probation services. Chrisner, deputy director of probation, and White Pember, supervisor of probation services. I'm here today to present a bunch of items. First on the agenda is fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, fourth quarter invoices. The total amount for those invoices is four million, eight hundred sixty two thousand, two hundred ninety five dollars. And I would ask that you approve the submission of those fourth quarter invoices.
I make a motion to approve the fourth quarter invoices.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second. Any questions, comments? Are you done? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. That approval.
Next, I have our fiscal year twenty four, twenty five final report. So for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, we were certified at thirteen million, six hundred fifteen thousand, seven hundred twenty five dollars with a county share of three million, four hundred ninety eight thousand, four hundred thirty two dollars. We actually came in at fifteen million, three hundred thirty two thousand, six hundred five dollars, which is an over expenditure of one million, seven hundred sixteen thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars. Our county share will now be three million, seven hundred ninety nine thousand, eight hundred sixty nine dollars, which is an increase of three hundred, one thousand, four hundred thirty seven dollars over the certified amount. At the commissioner presentation last year, we did anticipate an over expenditure. And we did anticipate that amount to be fourteen million, seven hundred eighty three thousand, seven hundred five dollars based on prior year spending. However, we still did come over that estimated amount. So for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, children and youth was certified at ten million, five hundred ninety four thousand, one hundred and thirty nine dollars. And children and youth spent a total of ten million, seven hundred thirty three thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars. Children and youth was overspent in the amount of one hundred thirty nine thousand, five hundred seventy two dollars. Juvenile probation for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five was certified at three million, twenty one thousand, five hundred sixty six or eighty six dollars and spent a total of four million, five hundred eighty nine thousand, eight hundred ninety four dollars. Juvenile probation came in overspent in the amount of one million, five hundred seventy seven thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. I would ask that you approve our fiscal year twenty four, twenty five final report.
Make a motion to approve the twenty four, twenty five final report.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second. Questions, comments?
We I know we spent some time on this whole this whole thing yesterday, but but I'm not sure. I think the answers are the same for the the overage as it is for what you're going to present next, which is the the increases in the budget. But children and youth was over by one and a half percent or something. That is not my question. The other was over by fifty percent. Can you talk, speak to why that happened over the last over the last year?
I can try. I apologize. If you can't understand what I'm saying, please let me know. Over the past several years, probation services has been underspent in utilizing our allocation of the needs-based budget. And each year, our percentage of allocation has decreased. We put the funds where needed. And typically, over the past couple of years, children and youth has been overspent and our under expenditures have helped to cover some of those expenses. This year, what we saw is what I would call a rebound in our number of referrals to juvenile probation post COVID. We did not have an immediate rebound of cases in juvenile probation. But we, starting in twenty twenty four, we did start to see those numbers increase back to what we would consider more pre-COVID numbers. In addition, we finally gained some access to two detention beds. So that when there is a need for community safety or for the safety of the youth, we had access now to two detention beds. And when you're utilizing the residential or detention services, those expenses are significantly higher than community-based services. And then, as we've discussed over the past couple of years, when we've been presenting contracts, per diem rates have skyrocketed, especially for residential and detention services. And so the combination of all of those things have kind of put us in the position where we are this year.
May I ask? When we're not using the bed, we're selling it to other counties.
We're making every attempt to, yes.
And so is that happening? And how often?
I can tell you it's not happening every day that the bed is empty.
Oh.
But we do send an email out when we're not utilizing the bed. We send emails out to other counties to let them know that our bed is currently available and to please contact us if they need to utilize the bed.
Let's just say a month is thirty days. How many of those are we utilizing it? And how many are is somebody else? And how many are nobody?
It really fluctuates. And so, you know, we've gone a month where we've had both of our beds filled each day by our own youth. And then you could have the next month where it's spread, where you have kids that are transitioning from. You know, we have to get them off the street until we find a service that's appropriate, get them out, and then we have another youth who filters in in between. If we don't have a youth, Doffin County might need to borrow it, or Berks County might need to borrow the bed. And so it just varies, but it it depends on the need of not only us, but other counties as well.
Those those other counties, they might need it for two days or twenty days. You have.
Correct.
We can't predict that and control that.
Right.
Other bed availability, so just moving target all the time.
I'm not trying to be mean. I'm just trying to get a handle on how many days we're not getting paid in a month.
I don't have that information with you. Yeah, I don't have that information with me. It would vary.
Okay. Is that where the bulk of your overage is?
No, because when the bed is empty, that comes out of my my juvenile probation budget. Does not come out of the needs-based. Actually, when we utilize the bed.
That's a big flaw.
That's when the money is utilized from the needs-based budget to pay for them.
What's the per diem on the bed, do you know?
I just went up to eight hundred a day per bed.
Okay, so that's that's what we're talking about on a given day.
Right.
This is very naive. I don't understand very deeply. Can you, are you allowed to put a juvenile that would be of a lesser charge to occupy that bed instead of paying three hundred dollars a day over here? Is there any way you could take advantage of having, instead of having an empty bed at eight hundred dollars, that you could transfer somebody or have fill that bed with someone?
So detention detention is different than a residential service. So detention is basically, I'll equate it to putting somebody down at Lebanon County Correctional Facility. They're holding the kids. It's for community safety. And in the meantime, we're trying to find an appropriate service for them. So we would release them then to a residential, which would then provide the counseling they need, schooling, different services like that. We we place the kids based on what their need is and what the need is for community safety. And sometimes that's more expensive, unfortunately.
I will say that, I mean, your over expenditure is proof that you do have kids in that those beds quite frequently because that is the money that's coming out of the budget, which is why we're seeing the over expenditure year.
Yes. It's been very difficult over the past few years not having access to detention beds. We are very careful who we're placing. You know, it's not something we utilize. I have to get the word. I'm sorry. It's carelessly. Thank you. We have an assessment tool that we utilize to see who's appropriate for detention. When it's appropriate to utilize community services, we are doing that. If we can keep somebody in the community on an electronic monitoring bracelet, we will do that as well. But there are times when that's just not an appropriate approach. Or we may even try that approach and it fails. You know, we've had kids who have cut off electronic monitoring bracelets multiple times when we didn't have a detention bed available. And we are fortunate enough now to have that as an alternative in those instances.
Well, I know you know what you're doing, but I just try to understand it better every day. And thank you for being patient and providing that information.
So we have, do we have motion on the floor regarding the implementation of budget?
Well, the final report.
Oh, I'm sorry. Finished the final report yet. So that so. Any additional questions, comments? Are that motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Have that approval important. But now the budget.
Next, I have fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, which is our current fiscal year implemented budget. This was approved last year and is currently certified at sixteen million, three hundred, two thousand, seven hundred forty one dollars with a county share of three million, eight hundred twenty four thousand, nine hundred sixty nine dollars. We are projecting that our implementation budget is going to come in somewhere around eighteen million, two hundred eighty three thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars. And our projected county share will be four million, four hundred ninety one thousand, two hundred fifty five dollars. The county share is estimated to increase by six hundred sixty six thousand, two hundred eighty six dollars. And this is all based on prior year spending. So because we were overspent in twenty four, twenty five, we are anticipating being overspent in twenty five, twenty six as well. So children and youth are certified at thirteen million, one hundred twelve thousand, seventy nine dollars. But again, based on fiscal year twenty four, twenty five expenses, we estimate to expend twelve million, seven hundred sixty five thousand, one hundred eighty three dollars, which is actually a decrease of three hundred forty six thousand, eight hundred ninety six dollars under the certified allocation. I'm sure you're asking, you're overspent. How are you? How are you estimating an under expenditure? So we have different cost centers at different breakdowns of state share, federal share. So we were able to move things around a little bit to get higher reimbursement rates from the state. Plus, we have federal funding through for reimbursement. And so we have kids who qualify based on certain things. So it might just be a matter of we have more kids that qualify for federal reimbursement right now versus last year. And so it ebbs and flows a little bit there. For juvenile probation, they are certified at three million, one hundred ninety thousand, six hundred sixty two dollars. But based on, again, fiscal year twenty four, twenty five expenses, we estimate that they will expend five million, five hundred eighty eighteen thousand, five hundred ninety seven dollars, which is two million, three hundred twenty seven thousand, nine hundred thirty five dollars over the certified allocation. I would ask that you approve our fiscal year twenty five, twenty six implementation budget.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions, comments?
The state funding. Little history there as far as their shortfall from that from their industry. Will just give us an idea how long it's been since we've had regular increases. There's kind of a budget, there are kind of a budget from there.
I mean, typically, it's an eighty twenty split, so it would be eighty percent state and twenty percent county. And that has been pretty stable as long as I have been involved in this. They do typically approve our increases as requested. I think the biggest issue we have now is the budget impasse in that we're kind of at a stalemate, not getting. I think the biggest issue we have now is the budget impasse and that we're kind of at a stalemate, not getting any funding in for the crisis.
Historical, that is a problem. God is here.
Mental health that hasn't been up, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I know, but they're usually pretty good about approving our budget as requested, as long as we have the support and documentation.
Okay.
Any additional questions or comments? Done? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Go same side, that budget is approved.
Next, we have our fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven needs-based budget. Our needs-based budget request is for twenty million, nine hundred, seventy-nine thousand, forty-one dollars, with a county share of five million, three hundred, four thousand, two hundred, five dollars. This is an increase from fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six implementation budget. Children and youth is requesting fourteen million, one hundred, seventy-eight thousand, three hundred, seventy dollars, which is an increase of one million, sixty-six thousand, two hundred, ninety-one dollars over the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six implementation budget. And this is due to provider rate increases, increases in the number of children in placement, and the need for those children to be in more costly placements to meet their higher needs at this point. Juvenile probation is requesting six million, eight hundred thousand, six hundred, seventy-one dollars, which is an increase of three million, six hundred, ten thousand, nine dollars over the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six implementation budget. I would ask that you approve our fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven needs-based budget.
Make a motion to approve the needs-based budget as presented.
Motion is second. Questions, comments? If you're not all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Oh, Jamie, you got something?
Well, this is the last of the budget items. I just want to, I just want to, I guess, bundle together the impact here so that we're going to do budget here in about a month. And we always start off with a deficit, not always, well, yeah, always. Depends on what's the size of it and so on. This is a big impact, big impact on what the deficit is going to be looking at twenty-twenty-six. And the way this will work is, is the, starting with the final report, the county share of the overspent was three hundred and one thousand. So that's got to come out of our pocket already. The twenty-twenty-six county budget, which will include these county shares out of the twenty-five, twenty-six implementation and the twenty-six, twenty-seven needs-based, half of one and half of the other. So it'll be the second half of the twenty-five, twenty-six and the first half of the twenty-six, twenty-seven. And you see that those are respectively, six hundred, sixty-six thousand increase in county share and three point six million increase in county share. So that's a two point one million dollar increase that we'll start off with for the twenty-twenty-six budget. And that's, you know, in addition to what, I really don't have sense of what the deficit will be. The departments haven't even finished submitting all their budgets yet. But, you know, it's going to be at least six million plus that, I would guess.
Wow.
So.
Jamie, I don't want to put out any fear, but I also want to mention that any over expenditures could be all county money. And the reason I say could be is because historically, the state has made us whole, meaning that they cover their fifty percent of that over expenditure. However, that gap is closing. The state has warned us that, you know, there are counties that are underspending as frequently as they did in the past, so that gap is closing. So while it has been pretty guaranteed over the last ten to fifteen years for them to make us whole.
Unconditional guarantee.
There's no unconditional guarantee there. So I do have to let you guys know, worst-case scenario in that our final report, that one point five million dollar expenditure, if the state cannot make us whole, would fall in the county and then subsequent years thereafter.
And if I recall correctly, is it a mill or a tenth of a mill, it was around a million dollars?
Ten.
Some of the. The ten.
Yeah, I believe I'd have to go.
Yeah.
So, you know, that it's a bleak picture for the twenty-twenty-six budget to start off with.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, on top of that, we're not getting the, we're not getting the state funding in. I don't foresee, you know, even what's been proposed in the, in the budget as it stands. There's some additional mental health funding in there, but that's not even this, that's Holly, and she's up, she's up on the agenda too. But, you know, it's, it's not going to solve problems on that side of things either, so.
We're between a rock and a hard place.
Well, this is tough for counties right now.
Get to that point in about a month.
Yeah.
You see what Jamie Dawn said, yeah, in a month, we can say it's your fault. I'm kidding, seriously, you know, some of the things you touched on yesterday about your recidivism rate and other counties looking at what you're doing. You're our model, in my opinion. And first and foremost, you're talking about doing the right thing, kids are in the right placement, you know. It's the right thing to do. But from a practical standpoint, if we don't get it right, you know, we're going to have bigger problems down the road and bigger expenses. So I think it's a wonderful investment that we do it right and do it for all the right reasons. So, thank you.
And to add to that, I mean, it's really important, I know a twenty million dollar budget sounds huge, but it's really important that we go in requesting what we think we're going to need because if the state approves it and they've bought into that eighty split. If we go in, you know, way under and come in way over, there's no guarantee of that, that their share is going to cover part of that over expenditure. So our hope is that we don't spend the twenty point nine million dollars, but we are estimating that that is where we will sit at.
You have a motion, second on the floor. Pass this needs-based budget. Any additional questions or comments? Done, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Go same side, you have that approval.
Next, we have our fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six service provider contracts. We have a total of twenty-eight service provider contracts. Fifteen of them are either not requesting any increases or they're new providers. The remaining thirteen service providers have requested increases with an average of five percent, all of them being within our budget amounts. I would ask that you approve our fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six service provider.
Second?
Motion is second. Questions, comments? Not all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, go same side, you have that approval.
Next, we have fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six placement provider contracts. We have a total of sixty-three placement provider contracts. Seven of those provider rates are still waiting OCIF approval or contracting information. Eleven providers are not requesting any increases or are MA-funded facilities at no cost to the agency. The remaining forty-five providers have requested increases with an average of fifteen percent, all of them being within the state-approved rate. These increases are due to increasing salary benefits, overtime pay due to staff shortages, increases in liability and health insurance, as well as making enhancements to programming to improve outcomes. I would ask that you approve fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six placement provider contracts.
Make a motion to approve the placement provider contracts as presented.
A second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Go same side, that approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Don't hurry back.
Thank you.
Hello, Warden.
Good morning.
Hey, Warden. Would please introduce yourself for the record and then you may proceed with your presentation.
Sure, you know, it's Warden at the Lebanon County Correctional Facility. I'm here asking for support to apply for the twenty-twenty-six Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Program, ARSAT. It's being sponsored through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, also known as PCCD. PCCD intends to award five counties up to two hundred thousand each to assist with their MAP costs. The Lebanon County Correctional Facility could apply and receive approximately two hundred thousand to support the established medication-assisted treatment program that we're currently running in conjunction with providing the cognitive behavioral therapy known as CBT, which our correctional facility medical vendor currently provides for the population involved in the program. You may recall that Lebanon County Correctional Facility was successful with the twenty-twenty-one Medical Assistant Treatment Grant Funds that were previously requested. At that time, there was ninety-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-six to be used to fund our vivitrol program. That included education and counseling and two vivitrol shots. The program also assisted with a handoff into the community so that the participant had a greater potential for successful reentry related to assisting with the program. The Lebanon County Correctional Facility continues to use funding from the twenty-twenty-four County Jail-based vivitrol program sought from PCCD. The twenty-twenty-four County-based vivitrol grant allows LCCF to bill for those active participants, participants in the vital, vivitrol program. The grant allowed us a hundred and six thousand, six hundred, twelve dollars to be used until September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. To date, we've had only two candidates. We were able to use about five thousand dollars. So we have the balance of that to move towards our twenty-twenty-six budget to be used up until that September thirtieth date. A little bit more information about the program. In twenty-twenty-three, there was a total of a hundred and eight patients in the Lebanon County Correctional Facility participating in the MAP program. In twenty-twenty-four, the numbers rose to a hundred and thirty-three. And as of September fifth of this year, we had approximately a hundred and fifty participants, which is approximately half our current population involved in the program. As you may recall, we are currently using various resources to help also the costs, such as, again, the twenty-twenty-four County Jail-based vivitrol program funds. The OBL funds, we are allowed at a hundred thousand for the maintenance part of the program. We're allotted another hundred thousand for the induction part of the program. And then we get approximately thirty thousand dollars to offset the security that we need to supervise the program. Also, to provide you some more data, the cost for MAP to date twenty-twenty-three was about a hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Twenty-twenty-four, due to the increase in patients, we were at approximately a hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. As of August of twenty-twenty-five, we have increased to a hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. So hopefully, if we're able to apply and succeed with this program, as I mentioned yesterday in prison board, we could almost offset, neutralize the cost to run the program based off the grant money and what we get from the OBL settlement money. The grant does require a county match, that's twenty-five percent. But I verified with PCCD that the money that we get from the OBL funds, that meets the county's portion as a requirement. So where our number stand? This grant, I believe, goes to September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven. It starts January one, twenty-twenty-six. We should stay on margin where we're contributing what we need to contribute for the program.
I'm going to authorize the Warden to apply for the ARSAT.
Second?
Motion is second. Any questions or comments? None, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Go same side, you have that approval. Good luck.
Thank you, Warden.
Thank you.
Oh, you're late. Oh, don't worry. If you would, please introduce yourself for the record and you may proceed.
Good morning, Holly Ley, Administrator for Lebanon County Mental Health, Intellectual Disabilities, Early Intervention Programs. I'm here this morning to present contract amendments for MHIDEI. I'll begin with fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. There are seven contract amendments in total. That's two for intellectual disabilities, four for mental health, and one for early intervention. And these are primarily to cover end-of-year expenses for services delivered during the fiscal year that went over the contracts. The total is one hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. All of these would be covered through our allocations for our funds for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So we are not requesting any county tax dollars to cover these expenditures.
Need them? Okay.
Close it, we can see act twenty-four, twenty-five contract amendments.
And I'll second the motion.
Motion is second. Questions or comments? Done, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Go same side, that approval.
Thank you. And then fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, there are ten contract amendments in total. That's nine for early intervention and one for intellectual disabilities. That's a total of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Early intervention is an entitlement program. So even in light of the state budget situation, the state of Pennsylvania is mandated to cover these services and these expenditures. Therefore, we are not requesting any county tax dollars to cover these contracts.
That's wonderful. And I'll make a motion to approve the request for a hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Motion is second. Questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, have that approval.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Adrian, good morning. Please introduce yourself for the record and then you may proceed.
Adrian Layser, Administrator from Area Agency on Aging. Today, I'm presenting two contracts. One is a home healthcare contract of us just adding in addition another provider. It does not end up changing our budget because our annual budget is budgeted per program for this. So it's top-tier home care program is an additional provider. We did have five personal care providers and we're down to two. Due to unforeseen circumstances, such as providers not being able to find staff, another provider ended up being sued during a COVID issue. So they're no longer in, in business. So I'm asking for the top-tier home care PA contract to be approved.
Agree, approve that.
Second?
Motion is second. Questions or comments? Done, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Go same side, you have that approval.
Okay, then the second contract is called Peace of Mind Aging and Wellness Specialist. Our Protective Service Annual Plan ends up requiring a physician consultant or an RN consultant, and we've never had one on staff. We've kind of just used what's available in the area. The psychologist that we were using out of Wyoming, seeing medical help has moved to New Jersey and is no longer available. So we need to have this person available to our Protective Service program. And they're used for psychobows for our people, mostly in the community that need to have capacity determined in order for us to end up going to court for guardianship. So that would be Peace of Mind Aging and Wellness Specialist. And you could end up seeing what her costs are and what her rates are. It's a five hundred dollar a month retainer fee to end up just keeping her there. That would end up being for phone consultations, review of faxes, main review of documents, and correspondence with long-term care facilities. Then the consultation fee is three hundred dollars per hour for the amount of time she spends with somebody. That would also end up including her testifying in court for us as well. She has some other fees here. She could end up being a consultant for someone that's in the community that might have wounds that could be considered self-neglect or caregiver neglect. She'd be able to evaluate them to make a determination if that was the case. There is also a seventy-five dollar per hour fee to be able to use a registered nurse for psychiatric evaluations. And then she's asking for a seventy cent reimbursement, or seventy cents reimbursement per mileage. So I'm asking for this person to end up being approved for the contract that's been presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the physician consultant as presented.
Oh, second. Motion is second.
Matt, have you had a chance?
Yeah, I communicated with these about this several days ago. That's good with it. When we filed guardianship, as Adrian mentioned, medical evaluations needed. Now, oftentimes, however, they will testify via phone or the other side of the stipulation to it, so that will limit how much they actually. It's my understanding, too, that this physician has experience in Lebanon County Court, and she works extensively in Lancaster County.
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Have that approval.
Okay, thank you.
Over there, just look just like you.
Good morning.
Please introduce yourself for the record and proceed.
Matt, you're lead Lebanon County Solicitor. I have one item for consideration by the board this morning. This is a lease agreement with uh John and Susan Lehman. They own property in Union Township. And uh, as you may recall, back in April, the county entered into an agreement of sale with the Lehmans uh relative to a one-point-two acre portion of their larger parcel in Union Township, uh which is just adjacent to Interstate eighty-one. This is for a a new tower site, one of the new DES tower sites in the northern part of the county. Uh, as the the county works with Union Township and stackback engineering through the subdivision process, that's going to take several months, uh several additional months. In the meantime, however, DBS uh would like to begin construction on that tower site. So the Lehmans have agreed uh to uh allow us to enter into a lease agreement. Uh, so this lease agreement is for one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per month. Uh, we don't anticipate that's lasting longer than several months uh before the subdivision process uh is completed. Uh, and the lease agreement will terminate upon uh the subdivision process being completed uh and and then settlement occurring on the property and and the county acquiring that one-point-two acre portion of land.
I'm going to approve this lease agreement.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions or comments? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Please introduce yourself for the record and you may proceed.
You, Barb Smith, the Donutary. I'm here to ask to have approval to have the courthouse open once again on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, for a passport acceptance day. We'd like to have between the hours of eight to twelve. I'm asking that the employees would receive um overtime pay, not to exceed five hours, and a maximum of nine employees would be working that day. I did just receive verbal confirmation from the sheriff that he would have somebody on duty as well for safety.
Make motion to approve the passport acceptance day on October twenty-fifth.
Second motion.
Motion is second. Questions, comments?
Question, any other departments going to be involved?
My knowledge, I have not heard anything, but I just spoke with the sheriff right before the meeting, so I don't know if he's going to be requesting to have his office open that day or not. Or it's likely.
Thank you.
May I just comment? The last time, we had ten employees. We processed a hundred and ninety-six passports and assisted with sixteen renewals. We had two hundred and twelve people, which totaled fifty-three people per hour. And our total was seventy-nine hundred dollars and, well, seventy-nine, seventy. So it was a very profitable day. We had a lot of comments. People are very appreciative. We don't see the uptick yet, but with the holidays approaching, we're expecting, we're anticipating a lot of people coming in, so.
Applaud you for doing this. Yeah, it's something you don't have to do, but it's I think a very convenience for a lot of people.
Will be here from me probably every spring and every fall because that seems to be the time people really apply.
What if you lost to send a note out to other departments, you know, if they're interested in doing something similar? Last time, we were kind of scrambling at the last minute that others were just doing it, uh, but that really should be coordinated with the sheriff.
Uh, others such as?
Other departments.
Yeah, I understand, but. Maybe your officers or?
Yeah, well, whatever departments you think might make sense. I'm just asking. Okay, so we have motion is second. Questions, comments? None? All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Have that approval. Again, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Not bad.
All right, let me do this. Uh, one item before Joe. Have um exception requests for uh eligible disabled veterans then from real estate taxes. They are John Skipper of Cypress Lane, Lebanon, David McLeod, Saddle Drive, Palmyra, and John Scrandberg of Clover Drive, Lebanon.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions, comments? None? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those.
Next, we're gonna follow up on the last meeting where the uh bid awards were made for Phase One A of renovations. And as you'll recall, uh, we did not receive any electrical bid at that time. So since then, uh, and it's Joe Connor from Beershoffen, sorry. Since then, we asked the general contractor, which is uh Arthur Funkensons, and we asked Shannon Smith Incorporated, which is the mechanical bid award, to kind of go back to the table and see if they can provide a uh a bid, so to speak, to conclude to complete the electrical work. Uh, it's not really a bid. We've gone through the bid process, checked with Solicitor, make sure can we just now, you know, go out and and select someone. So uh, we've asked them both to do that and introduced a little bit of competition so that they were both giving a number and both knew they were giving a number. Uh, and we, and so now we have numbers from both, and I'll let Joe go over those.
We didn't get anything in writing before this.
No, he he has it here. Um, so this so saying this is not a a bid any longer. This is a it's gonna be a change order to it. Change order before we've even, you know, swung a single hammer, but uh, it's the way we have to go about it. So I'll turn it over to Joe to kind of walk through it.
All right, so we did do it as a change order proposal. Uh, we did identify and date, time to deliver, and we did allow for questions to be asked as as similar to a bid process. Uh, some questions were asked. Information was shared with both contractors. Um, the two contractors both submitted uh and the the lowest change order proposal was from the general contractor, from uh Funk Construction. Uh, their number was one thirty-nine, five ninety. So it's a change order add proposal to be added to their contract. Their original contract was three oh seven, six twenty-one.
So we'd ask you approve that change order so then we can get moving with the with the with the work.
Can you clarify? Is that one thousand, thirteen thousand?
That's one hundred and thirty-three thousand.
One hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
Five hundred and ninety dollars. Okay, like I said, I have nothing in writing and no reference.
Sorry.
Thank you.
So and and I'm I'm not, uh, Joe's very sensitive to his estimates and and, you know, they they basically kind of put a dart on the wall and say this is where we think it's gonna fall.
More scientific than that.
Well, I'm not saying that's your new process, but anyhow.
It would be Jamie's process. So so with this electrical change order, I think we're somewhere between about forty thousand or with this. So our our, uh, we had provided, um, so prefaced by saying several months ago, we had provided a a cost per square foot overall estimate for what we assumed the project to be. And our high at that point was like five hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. These, with this, with this change order adds to Funk's number and the numbers that we received were general and mechanical, our total now is six hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars for this phase, which is sixty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars over what we had estimated.
To put it another way, your per square foot, you estimated around
Around a hundred and fifty dollars. Square foot, sixty-two, it went to one sixty.
And those are based, those estimates were based on uh renovations that neighboring Berks County has just done to some of their county facilities. And and they did the
And we did work on it as well.
So yeah, that's that's the closest best estimate we could get, uh, which I thought was a fair way to do it. So that's not too bad.
Again, we had good participation on the mechanical and general construction side for bid purposes. And I think with this um change order proposal going to both of them, we had competitive proposals. So Shannon Smith, you know, effectively would have been providing what would probably been their bid number. Uh, Funk had a subcontractor, another local electrical contractor, provide their number. Uh, and their number was actually more competitive than the electrical, so what we likely would have received as a total bid.
So we'd ask you approve that change order and then uh we can get going. This again is the is changes to the uh Public Defenders and Assessment Office, creating some space, creating uh different, more offices and more, basically more for the public defenders. And then from there, we will go on to uh one B and the other phases, and and those will likely be combined.
Right.
So we're not gonna be talking about seven different phases of bidding here. We're gonna, the next bunch of phases will be together. And then we'll move on through twenty twenty-six of this.
There'll be a multi-phase, multi-year effort, but it'll ideally be designed to be bid to a sing- single multiple primes. So you'll have one general contractor for the process, one mechanical contractor for the process, one electrical and one contractor throughout the entire process, rather than having multiple different contractors coming in from multiple different phases. There is an advantage to you having the overall project process completed by, you know, one multiple prime for each of the divisions over multi-year, multi-phase. Immobilized once, they get familiar with the building, especially electrical plumbing, mechanical contractors. Um, it's similar approach we take to school properties. Cedar Crest High School is currently being completed that way. Multi-year, three-year, eight phases, same multiple primes throughout the entire program.
I'm going to approve this change order for the one A.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments?
Who was the, what was the other bid and and buyer? I forget. Who was also there?
Uh, for this, this portion.
Electrical.
Yeah, so for this portion, the two prime, current prime contractors, Funk Construction and then Shannon Smith.
How much was there for electrical?
Uh, theirs was one forty-one, two fifteen. So yeah, they were within Pretty tight. Three thousand dollars of each of them. Competitive. Yeah.
Are you allowed to identify these sub?
Uh, stone or liquor. Yeah, so again, local, logical subcontractor will be working effectively under Funk Construction.
Okay, any additional questions, comments? None? All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Have that approval. Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, next, uh, I have hotel tax applications. Oh, I'm sorry. No, I have uh the loss prevention grant. Uh, I have a submission for you, uh, recommendation from the Lebanon County Safety Committee um to utilize a portion of our Pennsylvania County Risk Loss Prevention Grant. Uh, as a reminder, our carrier, the Pennsylvania County Risk Pool provides an annual grant amount for uh member counties to use toward improvements or uh items that will potentially reduce risk or reduce exposure. Uh, we've used that for a variety of things over the years. It varies beneficial and it's something a lot of, many of, not all the members value. Uh, this one that I'm uh asking your approval on is for a new badge reader for the employee entrance at Renova Center. Um, this would be a cost of five thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and and eighty-one cents. And um this would be the first of this cycle of the grant requests in a total of, this time around, it's twenty-five thousand dollars total. So it went down slightly, but uh, so I've asked for your approval on that. Quote is attached and and the description.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for five thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-one cents for a new badge reader.
Motion is second. Questions or comments? None? All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Okay, next I have uh three applications for hotel tax grant fund funds. Uh, as Pusher Phillips pointed out earlier, there's about fourteen thousand two hundred dollars unencumbered in the fund right now. These are the, all three applications are requesting five thousand dollars each. That does exceed what's in the fund currently. Um, what I think I'll do, if it's all right, let's just walk through all three of them and you wanna then kind of go from there? You want to do one by one?
Yes.
All right, the first one is from the Pennsylvania Chautauqua and Mount Bretton Borough. Um, this is for their uh their visitor center. This is located close in proximity to the playhouse, and they would like to um, this is a busy place where they draw hikers, explorers, people to dine, shop, camp, et cetera, uh, and renters in Mount Bretton. Um, and they wanna, and they are promoting Lebanon PA two fifty through this. Each year, they hire an ambassador to staff the visitor center, and uh it's also an advertising hub, et cetera. And they would uh like your, the funding to help promote that visitor center and total project or total cost would be seventy-five hundred dollars. They're asking for five thousand. The other is for, another is for the Northern Lebanon Youth Wrestling. And they are having the inaugural Carlton B. Deeseman Building and Remodeling Invitational Wrestling Tournament. About full. Uh, the total project cost of this is fourteen thousand dollars. They're requesting five thousand dollars. They provided uh quite a bit of information to you here with not only their budget, but what they expect from this uh event. They expect to bring twenty-one schools from six states, three hundred athletes, more than a thousand spectators. Um, they have awards and um they're already promoting the event through social media platforms and have several thousand followers. And they talk about their entrance fees and such that that they will be charging the participants, so they're asking for that. Um, and uh, obviously with people coming from six different states and the numbers of people, I believe there will be a lot of hotel rentals, hotel lot of bookings for that event. Then the third one, uh, similar to the last is the Future Stars Tournament Baseball LLC. This, these are youth baseball tournaments to be happen to to occur over a period of time in Anvil, Palmyra, Lebanon, Jonestown, and Fredericksburg. They have some specific numbers in here. Uh, if you look on page two, they uh, they had a twenty twenty-five tournament. This is for the twenty twenty-six tournament, and for twenty twenty-five, they had seventeen tournament dates in Lebanon County. They had eleven hundred teams attend in twenty twenty-five from Pennsylvania, New Jersey, New York, Connecticut, Massachusetts, Delaware, Maryland, Virginia, Ohio, Massachusetts again, and Canada. Um, they, they calculated that there were nineteen thousand dollars in bookings into Lebanon County hotels from April through August. So their total project um for this is sixty thousand dollars over the course of the event, and they're asking for five thousand dollars to help promote it. And those are the three, so if you want to
Are we ready?
Just go ahead. I did disperse our hotel tax for this month already. So our ten percent, ten percent share will be coming back, which I think was, would be about fourteen thousand.
Okay, so you're saying that the balance is gonna go to twenty-eight thousand?
Yeah.
You're saying the balance is?
It's going to go to twenty-eight thousand. It's a matter of, I guess, it
I'm gonna get it back shortly.
Sure. It has to, it has to route through VLV and go back to us.
Well, on this one, um, I noticed that
Which one?
Um, I'm sorry. It is Future Stars Tournament Baseball. I noticed that it says Hershey and Lebanon and State College, so it's not just for Lebanon County. Um, so I would propose uh three thousand dollars on that one. And I was going off to fourteen because we don't have the money in hand, and I always was told not to, you know, spend money before you receive it. And then also on the youth wrestling, another three thousand dollars, and then on the um the manning of the booths at the vis- like a visitor center, I thought, the five. Um, so that would be six and five, eleven thousand out of the fourteen. I was thinking to have seed money left.
Well, we are just, uh, on your first one, they talked about mentioning Hershey and others. But they're saying that the impact, the Lebanon County Hotel, take was nineteen thousand dollars. So to me, that's a
Yeah.
Very, you know, much in line with what we're trying to accomplish.
Prioritize heads and beds.
Yeah, I mean, they may, they may go beyond ours, but our hotels here have benefited to the
Of Hershey and the State College area contributed to this? Their commissioners?
Location of where they have to get fields to
You're asking for a five thousand or sixty thousand dollar budget.
I'm just saying that it benefits I'm just saying that it benefits multiple counties and that's good. But I think that's the consideration in in awarding them money for their project. I'm not saying don't fund it at all, I'm just saying three thousand. That's why that's my motion.
So that's in the form of a motion for those.
Yes, five, three and three.
Want to clarify, sure, for the minute.
A second for that.
A second for that. Is there additional additional motions you made regarding these requests?
Well, I'd like to, uh, you know.
Take them one at a time?
Yes. Fully fund the five thousand to the uh, uh, the tournament baseball thing.
Future stars.
Yeah, it shows the history of, you know, of twenty thousand dollars in hotel revenue, so that just is perfectly aligned with my. And I'm curious, it goes beyond Lebanon County or if other county commissioners support it, that is very relevant to me. It's what it's for the beds uh, in in Lebanon County that feed our fund, so. That's why we're doing it five thousand.
Five thousand for Future Stars Tournament. Your second?
I'll second it, again, I'm not convinced that's appropriate, but it's a school function that they're already funding.
Motion is second, any additional questions or comments regarding that motion? All favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye.
I guess.
Close? Let me give us her a no.
I said aye.
Okay, thank you.
In favor or opposed, just to make sure for.
In favor of.
Okay.
I I want to fund it, I just don't have enough information to fund it wholeheartedly because I don't have anything on Hershey and State College and what those commissioners are doing. That's what bothers me.
Okay, both path motions approved, so we still have two other requests on the table. Looking for either.
I'd like to do five thousand on the wrestling program, the fourteen thousand, I think, having their budgets.
Which one for five thousand for the Northern Lebanon Youth Wrestling Tournament?
Yes.
What about these discounted codes on the preferred hotels? Why are they discounting, they're paying that money? That was the thing that stuck out on me, so second page, second paragraph, um, under hotel detail sheet. They have discount codes for the hotels and I'm like, we're not supposed to be giving money to the hotels, the hotels.
The hotels is I take that the hotel is is offering a discount for them to book. Probably in group in group blocks, it doesn't change the amount of the tax that's well, it may, it's a percentage, it's a lesser amount, yeah. But I think that's purely up to the business of the hotel, yeah.
Well, I point out that that's contradictory, they're supposed to be paying us, not offering discounts. I mean, if they want to block a hotel, a hotel group, that's fine, but not with discounts because that's hurting our fund.
Well, you don't have a say.
Then they come back and want money.
You don't have no control. You don't have the control over what their rates are either, they can charge sixty dollars a night or a hundred twenty dollars a night and it doesn't matter.
Those back there are like a hundred seventy dollars a night.
Again, it's new money, it's not they're taking anything away from us.
We might not have the bookings otherwise, it's a marketing.
It's in contradiction with our hotel tax, that's.
In your, after what have or a motion, seconded motion?
I didn't hear the motion, but I will second it again, wholeheartedly, but we will second it.
Okay, motion and second. Any additional questions or comments regarding? Now, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close at the same time. That will get out. And item number three was the Pennsylvania Chautauqua and Mount Bretton Borough question.
Make a motion for five thousand dollars.
What are you spending, you have to do?
Because you you made those two the full five thousand, okay, then whatever is left there. Um, I know we're short couple of hours, whatever it comes out to, four thousand and nine hundred dollars, whatever.
The danger from the from the current balance?
Yes.
Four thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars.
Okay.
Is that the motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion is second, any questions or comments? Done all favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Yeah, it's given.
That would be everything I have, you have a board election for the next, so. It all it said.
Anything else for the good of the order? Not well entertained, a motion adjourned.
How many seconds?
Adjourned.
If you five of you rolling. If you want to take five of these.
He lost his plate cabinet.
Change, possibly change. I didn't hear.
What was the amount for my friend?
Four thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars. Four thousand.
That was unanimous?
Yeah.
All unanimous? All three were unanimous?
Yes.
So the question is, are we taking pause or rolling or?
Up to you, I don't. I don't need to roll.
If you just roll.
Sean's here and he looks like confident.
We're going to run this folding machine.
Just the farewell to George Joy. Sad farewell. So uh, with all of this meeting to order of the election board. And ask for public comment if there is any. If you're dark to this part of our agenda. But um, you will look for the approval of the minutes of our April seventeenth, May twentieth, and May twenty-third meetings, which have been made part of your packets.
Oh. Motion to approve those minutes as presented?
Second.
We moved in second, we have very detailed minutes available and for any additions, additions or corrections, you'll hear them now. If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Close same signs, so moved. I'll turn it over to Sean and Joy for the if you'd like to introduce yourselves.
Sure, Sean Rasher, Director of Elections.
Joyce Scoburn, Deputy Director.
Hey, you start with the ballots.
We'll start with, uh, we have our ballots here. I left a paper copy, I gave you electronic copies in advance. I've been out for public feedback for about two full weeks, we got a little bit of feedback, it was very helpful. We are ready to roll, so uh, this is the last step except for logic and accuracy testing, so. Uh, it'll be Monday, the twenty-ninth, we'll begin logic and accuracy testing.
September twenty-ninth.
Or yes, yeah.
And then that would get the.
The ballots would go out. Traditionally, in Lebanon County, we go out the last day of logic and accuracy testing or the Monday following.
And that would be what you're planning?
Yes, yeah, that will be four weeks ahead of the election.
Very good, thank you.
So we need approval on the ballot presented.
I'll make a motion for that ballot as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ballots for the upcoming election. Any questions or comments? Yes, would you introduce yourself?
The minor changes that were addressed or given to Sean, how do we know that they were done? I guess, were they put out again?
Yes, yeah, yeah, nearly every day I put out an updated version of the ballot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so order.
Okay. The next thing I have for you is uh, with the approval of the ballot and then the completion of logic and accuracy testing. Uh, that will put us out the first week, about the first week of October. Uh, for for actual mail drop. And we've been going for the ballot drop-off point in the parking lot. We've been going one week post-mail, the week following mailing is when we set that up and we've been going election to election on that. So I would ask for approval for deploying the drop-off point because that will be before the next, the next Board of Elections meeting.
The exact date, do you have?
Uh, that would be. Had it in my head and she's asked me. That would be to the twenty-ninth. That would be the week, uh, Monday, the thirteenth, so it would be Monday, the fourteenth after Columbus Day.
Ten.
That would be one week, one full week after the ballots have been mailed.
October, November.
October.
October fourteenth. Okay, I will make a motion to set up the drop box and open it for October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
It's been lived in seconded, any questions regarding this motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved.
And in discussing this with our county solicitor, something to consider would be that moving forward. Would the commissioners be comfortable in passing a motion in continuing to deploy the drop box a full week? The the full following week after ballots have been deployed?
I would make that motion.
Well, I'm not understanding.
So every every election, we we vote on the same resolution and pass the same resolution. It's always the the week following the mailing of ballots.
Standardize this.
Could we just standardize it and have that moving forward? We could always revisit it if need be, but then that would simplify things.
Yeah, just having a standing authorization by the election board so that it's away, the date at which we begin the drop off uh, the morning in the parking lot is always one week.
Following.
Yeah.
The mailing of ballots.
Whenever they're mailed out typically it's.
And it's always going to be about the same, about three weeks about, but.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, uh, it's delivered in seconded, any questions regarding this motion? As was mentioned, we can always revisit it if we decide at some point to change the either schedule or the idea of it. Um, so the motion is to standardize it, that's what I mentioned. That may not, no comments, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Close same signs, so moved.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, I have some general updates for you then. Uh, and Jamie was able to join us today, she is out for a couple of days. Uh, we'll be in October presenting some work that she's been doing regarding student poll workers, there's some very exciting things that she's had on her plate. Um, so I'll let her present that when we come back in a month. In the meantime, uh, update on the shore deployment, which is our upgrade of our database, is that we are looking for first quarter twenty twenty-seven on the rollout of that database upgrade, it can't happen soon enough, so we will hope, cross our fingers that happens. So that's first quarter twenty twenty-seven, that's, this is completely outside of our county. We've, except for feedback on conference calls, we have no, we have no impact on this, so. Hope the state stays on schedule. Uh, poll worker challenge is, we we did lose a lot of poll workers this time around, but the seats have already been filled. Uh, I suspect that we may have people that know that their 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 time is up. Uh, and may have mistakenly quit an election early, thinking that this was the end of the road for them. Uh, so we have re-recruited them or filled the spots where we've had to. And we are, as far as I know, as of today, we are short a few, but we're we should be able to plug those holes.
What is the, I don't understand the, why they think their time is up?
Uh, yeah, I don't know either, they they, we've been pretty careful about explaining they go through the end of this year, but even in the spring.
I could stop you, you mean they were on the ballot in the spring? And they thought, they may think that after that they were finished.
Correct, and we even had this problem in the spring.
Or that the the position was on the ballot.
The position's on the ballot, yeah.
I understand, thank you.
So in the in the spring, we were having to chase down people who thought, well, I thought my, I thought my my time was up here and uh, but yeah, we're still doing that. So then Y L A is the, I'm sorry, logic and accuracy testing will be that week of the twenty-ninth. You had to push that back one week, uh, but we're still on overall on schedule, so that shouldn't impact as much.
And I'd like to be very clear, the twenty-ninth of September.
September. Don't really be pushing us way back.
We'd probably get some calls.
Yeah, that would go notice. Um, and finally, we have added a sub-page to our department page for campaign finance and for candidates to use as a reference point. It is pretty bare bones as of right now, but there's some good information on there, we have instructional video. Uh, we have some guidelines on filling out the paperwork, very basic, nothing across as any legal guidelines, solicitor. Just just very dates and these are the forms to use. And I'd like to continue to work on that in the next year to make it more robust and more useful. So before we get to the next municipal cycle, we'll have some better information out there. Uh, that is up, if you want to see it, it's uh, linked on our our main department homepage. And uh, we have been looking, Joy's been working very hard for the last year evaluating polling places, all of our existing ones. And she's done some really incredible work. And there were some sites that because of turnover of ownership and a variety of other reasons that we had to consider possibly moving in the future, but we didn't want to do any mid-cycle, however, one has forced her hand, you want to?
The North Lebanon East Precinct. Located at the formerly known as Blue Max Bingo Hall, was sold in July, I believe it was July of this year. Um, we asked the new owners if we could continue being there, we've had no real response from them. We looked at eight other places and it appears the best solution for that is to move North Lebanon East Precinct to Kimberlins Grange on nine ninety Mount Zion Road.
So before a motion is made, my my feedback would be that we haven't, we we have connected.
Yeah, if I can allow, there were several written notices that went out from the election office. I called uh, the the new entity that owns, it's a religious entity. Uh, I was able to speak to somebody on Tuesday uh, who indicated that he was going to speak to uh, the rest of his congregation and see if this is something that they are comfortable with us using uh, the the property for moving forward. Uh, we did express that it seems to be a good polling location, it's been used for several years. Although we also respect that it's now their property and they they could certainly do with their property what they want to do with it. Uh, and so, and he did indicate that there may be some some opposition, so in in uh, you know, in an effort to plan accordingly, this is why the the alternative option of Kimberlins Grange is being presented. Because there are certain notice requirements that have to be given with sufficient time to notify the voters that there has been a change in their polling location.
Yeah. So we would ask that if if a motion were made, that it would be framed in that our hope is that we can stay at Blue Max Bingo Hall, it's an excellent location, but in light of what could be this afternoon or tomorrow, they're coming back with a rejection, that we would approve moving forward with this as an alternate site.
Would you prefer that the motion have a deadline, if if not by, you know, the end of tomorrow, then?
By the end of next week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
I think that's to get our letters deadlines.
Yes, about thirty days or so, yeah, for the notice requirements, so at the end of next week would be a good deadline.
And so I'll make a motion to approve the changing of the twenty-seven East North Lebanon uh, voting polling location to plan to move it to Kimberlins Grange if we do not uh, formalize the approval of the new owners of the former Blue Max Bingo Hall.
Okay.
By next, by the end of next week.
Can that motion, if that's sufficient?
Six. Point six.
Yeah, the date should be in there.
Yeah.
They're on the motion, we'll try to accomplish here. Any any comments or questions regarding this motion? Good work, thank you, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Close, so moved.
Okay, and finally, uh, we have, our E I G P grant funds have come back in and have been deposited. Uh, those funds are fantastic resource for us. The intent of the funds is for capital investment in elections and other expenses that would arise out of elections. That, uh, for instance, the hundred percent printing the ballots that we've been at for a little while now, this still offsets that. Uh, large number of additional mailings that are going out that didn't have to be before Act seventy-seven. I would ask that we have approval on use of those funds for a new letter opener. We did, or a letter folder, uh, we did purchase one about two, a little over two years ago, we got about five elections out of it. It was recommended to us by a vendor who said it was perfect for our. It was recommended to us by a vendor who said it was perfect for our need. We use a full, heavy duty ID cards and things like that, that are a little too thick for a normal letter folder. It lasted only about five elections and died, and it has been discontinued and the parts are unavailable for the old machine. So we are going with a new vendor and a more modern machine that is designed to do both letter folding and ID cards specifically. So we would ask for the funds be applied to that. About $18,750.
I will make a motion for $18,750 to buy a good letter folder.
I'll second that.
It's removed and seconded in the bookings, we can taste, do we have to stay getting the folder?
We, we already told her, and named her honor.
That's enough. Yes, we'll put it, play on it. Any questions regarding this motion?
Could you just clarify for the followers, EIG is Election Integrity Grant?
Yes, Election Integrity Grant, yes.
Any motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
So, so moved. And that's all we have for you.
Thank you. Well, for your excellent.
Here and I just want to say, you know, boy, I wish you well, your, your, your family's moving to Texas, is it?
We've had a home in Texas and my husband's family is there.
Yeah, well, well, I want to thank you for extending your time with our office because you could have gone, but I thank you for sticking around for this election cycle and for all your work in the voter registration office. I think the highest compliment we can pay you is that you're going to be hard to replace.
Thank you. Thank you for all great things, you know, being part of this courthouse.
We will miss you.
Okay, anything from the floor? They're doing well for the business, they're coming before the election board, I, for motion to adjourn.
Second.
Great, just adjourned, thank you.